Seeing that no one is rushing forward, we will close the public comment tonight and beginning, begin with the business of the evening. We have Catherine, who is joining us as a student representative to the board for her first meeting, so welcome Catherine. We look forward to working with you this year. Would you like to go ahead and do your report and review the calendar? That'd be very helpful.
It's pretty short and sweet.
Perfect.
School hasn't really started yet. Today was the faculty's official first day, and students go back on August 28th. Some fall sports have started. Boys and girls varsity soccer has their first game in Littleton tomorrow at 4:45, if anyone wants to catch that. And the football team starts their first game in Franklin September 2nd. Boys and girl, or the coed cross-country has a meet at Guilford High School August 31st at 4:00 PM. And the boys and girls varsity soccer has their second game in Moltenborough the same day at 4:00 and 5:30 PM. And for the elementary school, they have their cross-country starting the second week of September.
Excellent. That's it for today.
Thank you very much.
I neglected to mention at the beginning of the meeting that two of our members, Mr. Kinison and Ms. McKenney, are away on approved absences. They will be back with us for our meeting on September 7th. Meredith, would you like to proceed with your report?
I certainly can. Do you want to do that first, or do you want to?
I think I want to amend the agenda, if you all will let me. We have some facilities updates that I'd like to address, because I feel like there might be people present who are part of that, and I don't think they want to stay for all of our policy discussions. So if we could move down to section, let me see what it is.
B, it's immediately after policy.
Immediately after policy, section B, we can look at the, from Greg, the facility use request that we had received. And Meredith, if you could sort of highlight the details on those, I would appreciate it. We've had time to review them, but just to make sure that the public knows what they say.
Sure. So you have an existing facilities use policy. It is in need of updating at some point, and that will be good timing, I think, with the arrival of our facilities director to look at that, as well as as we enter into construction, or we're about to enter into construction, to make sure that we're reviewing that policy later this year will be important. That said, our existing policy lays out a pretty specific fee schedule for users of our buildings, and it's broken down into categories, essentially new market residents, or town of New Market, or, or school events, events and activities and organizations that benefit only New Market residents, and activities and organizations that benefit New Market residents and non-New Market residents. So there's sort of a schedule assigned to use of particular rooms, how custodial fees are paid, all of that is laid out in your policy. You may recall that last year, we looked at waivers because we had some history of charging less to particular organizations, different from what was in our policy. And so I came to you last year and said, this is historically what these organizations have paid. In the spirit of, you know, sort of community support, I want you to consider whether or not you want to waive that policy again, to be, to charge consistent fees without you have charged before. So as Greg has come in, he's taken on the responsibility of reviewing facilities use requests. And again, we have three organizations that have made the request to use our facilities this year. All of them are prior users. They are Extreme Air, represented here tonight, Integrity Hoops, and One World Language. And all of them have been using facilities since, certainly before my arrival, but Mr. Marles has laid out recommendations for the fee pieces. So without belaboring his whole memo, which is online and available for the public to review, Mr. Marles is recommending, in the case of Extreme Air, that we waive the custodial coverage fees and set the facilities use fee at $1,200 for the season. In the case of Integrity Hoops, he's recommending that we set the facility use fee at $1,400 for the season. And in the case of, sorry, in One World Language, that we waive the facility use fee entirely at this time. I think last year, they were charged $12. So, those are the three requests, and we would enter, well, that's not my call.
I would seek a motion to approve these three things as listed. For the One World Language, no, for Extreme Air, it would be a $1,200 fee for the year for the use of facilities, waiving the custodial coverage fee. For Integrity Hoops, it would be a $1,400 fee, down from the 27th, that they've been paying before, because they were probably paying too much per Greg's note. And finally, we're going to waive entirely the fee for One World Language.
So, second?
On a, any discussion about that motion? One thing I want to say, Meredith, is that I appreciate the thoroughness in which Greg wrote these memos, and looked at the whole situation in terms of being fair when we were overcharging someone, and consistent with what we've been charging people in the past. I agree that the policy needs to be amended and readdressed moving forward, but he definitely understands it, and will help to supply it effectively this time.
Thank you for that feedback.
Any further discussion?
And this should be, hopefully, the last time we have to make these exceptions. The policy will be ready for next year.
Yes. We expect to have the policy in place for next year. There could be other things that come up during this year. These particular organizations are typically the only ones we see who request sort of year-long usage of our buildings, or extended season usage of our buildings, so.
All right. Seeing no more, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Jen, that's three in favor of approving the Al's, Al's motion, and no abstentions, no opposition. That is it. You guys are all set. Thank you for bringing a great organization to our community. Would you guys like to say anything about Extreme Air?
Well, I did have one question.
Yes.
So I just wanted to know if that $1,200 was for both building uses this Saturday?
Yes. It's your, it's the total.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Could you just tell us for a minute about Extreme Air?
Oh, sure.
You have to come.
Come to the mic.
And your name too? Sure. I'm Amy McKevan. I'm a parent representative, and Extreme Air of New Hampshire is the only nationally competitive jump rope team in the state, and our goal is to promote fitness and the sport. And we have tremendous expenditures to get our athletes who qualify for the national championship to get there. And so waiving this facilities fee for us this year is a really big impact to our teams, that we wanted to thank you.
Weren't you in the, did an article in the newspaper recently about Extreme Air?
Yeah. Yep. So, well, we did a demonstration at the New Market Night Out, so some of you might have seen us there. And we also do demonstrations around the state promoting our sport, and showing the skills that our athletes have.
And the team just traveled to Orlando, right? And then California.
We did, yeah. And every member of our team qualified for the national championship, with many of them placing in the top 10 in the nation.
Brilliant.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for doing, amending, allowing me to amend that. Please agenda for that. Excellent, those three excellent programs. Meredith, if you would like to proceed with your superintendent's report, we'll just get back where we were on the agenda.
Okay. Well, as Catherine noted, today was opening day for faculty here in our schools, and again, I want to express thanks to our custodial and facility staff, who have our buildings looking as good as they can, all bright and shiny and ready for students. And our food service staff are preparing a great breakfast today, but they're also busily at work making sure our kitchens are going to be operational and ready to serve breakfast and lunch on Monday. We had freshman orientation yesterday, in fact, at the junior senior high. Our new teachers were also here yesterday at the junior senior high for their orientation to the district and policies and procedures, and they did some work with their mentors yesterday as well. We have, I have a very long list, so buckle up. Since we last met way back at the end of June, as you know, a lot happens in the district during the summer. So we had summer programs that operated throughout the summer, including special education programs, Title I programs, and program that we offered for at-risk students at the elementary level, as well as the Phillips Exeter Academy enrichment program at the junior senior high. So all of those sort of wound down, my, my computer is talking to me. All of those wound down at the end of July, or either late July or early August. And so that means that staff working with those programs, that folks sort of working around those programs to manage our facilities have been working with all of those pieces. We have evaluations out.
The alarms are going off.
That's right. We've asked families for feedback about our Title I program, and keeping with the use of those federal funds to benefit students, and getting feedback from parents and students about how that worked, was it successful? We will have, Mr. Andruski, when he next comes to present to you, he will talk a little bit about summer programs and the professional development that occurred during the summer as well. So we'll have that, hopefully, the second September meeting for you. And there's a lot of PD that happens. I shared with you in June, one of the things scheduled for us was a Google educator training. So that happened in mid-July. There was a data summit at the junior senior high school, again, really beginning to, not beginning to, but continuing to really dig into some of the information that we have about our students and the work that's occurring in our district, and looking at, analyzing where we can improve our work and improve outcomes for students. We have been very busily at work with building-related projects. A lot of engineers and folks at our buildings this summer. We did, if you drove by while we had some heavy equipment outside, they were digging test pits at our buildings. We've repaved and regraded the driveway at the elementary school, because it was in such disrepair that we were not sure our DPW was going to plow it for us this winter. And it was interfering with delivery of our foodstuffs on a regular basis. So those repairs were made. The Perkins Building, which I know lots of folks drive by, got some repair, had some repairs made, and a new coat of paint put on. So that's no longer the eyesore that it, that might, it might have seemed to folks traveling through town. So we're happy to have that accomplished. I'll talk more about building committee pieces, but we had our administrative team retreat. Again, so all of the work, sort of mapping out things that we expect to accomplish during the school year, timelines for those, beginning onboarding new staff, wrapping up hiring procedures, there's a lot that happens behind the scenes. And so I appreciate the hard work of everyone who is in during the summer. We run on skeleton crews in some cases. We wrap up the fiscal year. We prepare for our audit. We, we start the new fiscal year. We begin our new payroll. We have to update benefits through open enrollment. So there, there are many moving pieces in the summer. So while we may think it's quiet, and nothing goes on behind the scenes, and all of our staff take the summer off, that's not the case. So those are just a few of the things, and as I said, we'll give you a more detailed report on professional development a bit later on. I'm not quite done. This is the stack of the other things I want to update you on, but, good try. Apparently, I'll take that as a hint to hurry up.
No, no.
So we did receive a letter of resignation from high school chemistry teacher Heather Harvey. We've already made many forward strides in filling that position, so we expect to bring a nomination to you at our next board meeting. In the interim, we have a highly qualified chemistry teacher with many years of experience in another district, who has been gracious enough to step in for us as a substitute. And I know, because I met with her today, that the lesson plans are ready. So, don't worry. She is high expectations for students, and will be a great addition to our team. We recognize staff with many years of experience in our district today, and, and while we have many, we tend to recognize the anniversary date, so I won't run the complete list for you at this time.
That was an impressive list this morning.
I, I do want to say, we have a couple of folks who've just crossed the 30-year milestone this year, and we have another, I think, dozen people who have been in the district more than 30 years. So that, again, I think just speaks to the, the staying power and the strength of this community, and supporting its, its educators and staff, so thanks to them. Tomorrow, on Cook's Corner on WMUR, you can check out our elementary food service manager, who is there to, I forget what the meal is, chili pineapple chicken dish, and giving some tips to families on how to prepare that with their children at home. So check that out tomorrow at noon, if you have the opportunity. We have completed the heating oil bid, and the low bid. We locked in fuel oil for this coming winter at $1.70, I guess $1.78, I'll round up, for this coming winter. So that is good news. It is a bit lower than we budgeted for, so you never know how that's going to pan out, but we're delighted that it came out lower than anticipated. Just a note to community members, that the elementary playground is not open to the public while school is in session, and I know from time to time, folks might walk dogs through the playground, or it's part of their walking route, but because we have students out there so regularly during the day, that playground is closed to public access between the hours of 8:00 and 3:30. So we've had some updated signs that should be posted out there for next week. You know, we certainly welcome the public to our schools. If you want to visit, please stop in our office, and, and we'll help you get registered as a visitor, so that you can, can visit our schools. Let's see. Enclosed in your packet was a letter from NEASC, or the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, just giving an update on their review of the special progress report submitted by the junior senior high school in June. And the junior senior high school was removed from the warning for standard on school resources for learning, and accreditation for the junior senior high school has been continued. They are expecting another special progress report in April 2019, to address specifically the status of the building project and the expected timeline for completion of the construction and renovation. So once we get over that threshold, we will have fully cleared the NEASC accreditation process. And, and that's been several years in the making. There are a few other issues that were addressed in, in prior years, to include the hiring of a full-time library media specialist at the junior senior high. So, good news. Included also in your packet was just an update on the status of impact fees as of the end of June. At this time, the school department has an available balance of $145,180.64. The next refund date for those is June of 2021. Access to those impact fees for the school department is related to the school's involvement in the CIP process with the town, capital improvements planning process. And again, the school does cooperate with that process, and has been working with, and is continuing to work with, the capital improvements planning committee. We actually have our, capital improvements planning submission is due to them on September 6th, so we are working to meet that timeline right now as well. They start their process a bit earlier than the school begins its budget process, so that sneaks up on us, but we expect to be ready.
As of the school impact fee, is, is, is available now?
No, June of 2021.
Okay, available now, June 30th, 2017. It says 140.
That's the existing balance, and then the next refund date is when those funds are next available for the school department to withdraw.
The next column on the right.
So the town holds those fees. They're distributed on an intermittent basis, and again, so those fees accumulate based on new property development, and fees assessed for those, and then, but the school can't just withdraw them on an annual basis, typically.
What I'm confused, I guess, by is the title of that column.
I understand.
So that really, that is not an avail, that's the balance?
It's the balance.
Not the available balance?
Correct. I think it's in a, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And is that what will be available on 6/25/21?
I would expect that number to grow by that time. Yes, yes.
So, I get you.
And so, again, that's good news, as we sort of work through the building project. That's a time where if we have, you know, additional capital needs, that that's a time when we might consider making that kind of a purchase, because we know that those additional funds might be available. So again, as we look to sort of moderate tax impact for large purchases when they arise, that's a time when we might target.
So why have they held until 2021?
Boy, there are statutory pieces related to that. I would need to do a little research for you, but I can do that and bring you that update.
No, no, I'm just curious.
I'm happy to get you the update. I haven't had to look at that in a couple of years, so I will get that information for you. Just going to write it on my follow-up list. In your packet from the end of June was a letter from the Lamprey Healthcare School-Based Dental Program, just acknowledging the number of students served. So they did 136 screenings at the elementary school. And again, you can see at the bottom, the preventative care that was performed, 15 cleanings, five ceilings, four silver diamines, 79 fluoride varnish, fluoride varnish applications, for a preventive treatment cost of, of about $2,533. So these are children who might not otherwise have had access to that dental care, so we appreciate very much our partnership with Lamprey Healthcare. One of the things they noted in there is that they've seen a decline in decay that they've had to treat. And I think, again, that speaks to that partnership and the education that they work with our nurses to, to provide in our schools, so.
So, again, on the numbers, so everybody's eligible?
Everybody's eligible.
136 participated.
Yep.
118 declined.
Yep.
That doesn't add up to the five.
No, because only about 50% of folks returned forms.
Right.
So, yeah.
And what do they do? I mean, they will come in and give an exam, and whatever media work is necessary?
Exactly.
For free?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
They don't, they obviously don't do dental surgeries, but they will make referrals to, to surgeons. Yep, they fill cavities, treat decay.
And to go along with what you were saying about the decline in, in the issues, is they also go to classrooms and do a presentation to the students about brushing their teeth?
Yeah, it was all of them, I saw, yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
It's nice to see these statistics, and that people are taking advantage of the program that is offered, and there's positive results, so.
Absolutely.
Very wonderful. That's, that's wonderful. I just read something this summer, and it's the first time I've seen that something. Like periodontal disease is kind of considered to type 2 diabetes, so you know, the ability to help with dental care. Whoa.
And that's available to all elementary?
It is.
That's awesome.
So, yeah. It is, it's, it wasn't there when you were there, I think. I, I moved here freshman year. Okay. All right. But it, yes, it is a great, a great thing to be able to provide. And I know, you know, from being in education back 10, 15 years ago, that wasn't a service that we were easily able to provide to students. And we saw a lot of students who suffered with dental decay, and infection, and discomfort, and it interferes with learning. And so this partnership allows us to help fill that need, and let students learn.
That's incredible. Even working with the military students, we could get our, our very special needs children serviced, but the general population not. That's incredible.
A couple final things. Staff in the SAU office and in the town will be working together next week at an AED training that our fire department is providing, so everyone in the building is getting and updated if they need it, or new in some cases, training on how to operate an AED in a case of emergency. Again, this building services the public.
And that's a defibrillator.
That is the automatic external defibrillator, yes.
And that's available to all citizens, I noticed, that try to.
So the fire department has been offering trainings around the community. New Market is attempting to become a heart-safe community, and so we've worked with the fire department to formalize our response protocols in the event of a cardiac emergency. And they've been offering evening trainings. I don't have the latest information on those, but I believe it may be posted in the town newsletter, and/or you could contact the fire department.
I meant to go on the 14th and, and got otherwise occupied, or I missed it.
Yeah.
And I was going to ask, when, looking at the policies, I didn't see anything in there about AED, I saw CPR, but nothing about AED.
So it, it's not required, and the policies before you are only the required ones, but yes, certainly happy to speak to that further. Met earlier this week with New Market Community Education Partnership folks at their board meeting. Want to remind our faculty and the community that their grants, which are to support youth in New Market, are due on the 15th of September. So if you are entertaining the idea of submitting one, now's the time. More information about that organization and the grant process is available on their website. Encourage you to check that out. And I think, that's about it. Other than to say, New Market Night Out was mentioned a little bit earlier. School department had definitely a, a little bit of a presence there. Police department helps organize that, but there was a great turnout for that event on the 12th of August. And on a related community note, 68 Hours of Hunger is moving into their new space, and they have their grand opening this Saturday at 10:00. So, takes a village.
It does. We have some excellent organizations doing amazing things in our town, and it's a special place to be, because you just named a few of them, and we have so many more. So we're excellently positioned to help people, and it's great. Anything else you want to add?
I'll stop. We have a lot more to do.
Just a couple of things in the, in the, the next thing on our agenda, the committee reports, and I, again, over the summer, Al and I went to a shared services committee meeting with the two members of the town council, Meredith and Steve, who's the town administrator, to talk about sort of where we are with shared services, for everyone's consumption. We have two positions that are shared between the town and the school now. The finance director, finance manager was the first one, and now we have the facilities director in place. And I can just say for myself, you know, with Lisa's hard work so far, and what Greg has done so far, we can, I can see the value of these positions, and the expertise they bring to the table. The, the memos that, as Meredith said, are online from Greg, reports that Lisa has prepared for us, have been invaluable to help us understand those areas of expertise in ways that I didn't understand them before, so I appreciate having those people in, and we've been successful. To that end, we're going to have our second joint school board and town council meeting. That meeting is next Wednesday, August 30th at 7:00 PM downstairs in the auditorium. Meredith, Dale Pike, the chair of the town council, Steve, the town administrator, and myself met yesterday to set the agenda for that. So you guys will be seeing that. Basically, we'll be sort of reviewing where we are in terms of the shared positions, some ideas for, for moving forward in that area, and then looking a little bit at the CIP process for this year, and what we might do in subsequent years for that process. And it's nice to, to have the, the two groups together in the room, hearing the same information, discussing things collaboratively, you know, and really looking at the best ways to use the combined resources that we share from the, from the taxpayers. So it's, it's an excellent thing. One of the things that I wanted to add, one of our roles as a, as a school board, as we all know, is to review Meredith's performance. And our policy states that that review needs to be delivered to her by August 31st. Sadly, due to scheduling issues, we're going to have to push that back to November 5th, but we will be.
September.
September, November, oh my gosh. No, we're not moving it that far. September 5th, we will meet with Meredith to discuss her performance and her, her service to the district for the past 18 months almost, no, not quite yet. I'm seeing, I'm putting things in November and adding on months. A little bit over a year. And any other reports from any, Al, Al or Meredith, do you guys have anything for the building committee meeting last night?
I can update on the schedule. I can update on the schedule if you want. And so, building committee met last night to review some plan updates. Essentially, we were looking at some shifting around of some space in both buildings, both in our kitchens, as well as at the junior senior high and our science rooms. We talked about some more specific spaces. It's all, you know, as we've reminded the public, we're not yet at the final set of drawings. It's still very much a work in progress. And so as we lay out, for example, where the equipment fits in the kitchen, we might have discovered that, oh, we need to shift that around the corner, and the electrical outlets may need to go somewhere else. So we're still working through those pieces. Next, oh, next, not next week, the week after, September thirteenth, we'll be meeting at five P.M. to get updates on our civil engineering work as well as mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems for both buildings. So that's an important meeting for us. Civil engineering work has been ongoing. There's been geotechnical work that's been going on this summer. There's been engineering work going on this summer. So all of those pieces are sort of coming to a point where there's more information to share. So that will be shared on September thirteenth. We will be meeting with faculty in both buildings on the twenty-ninth of September. On November first is, the committee will meet again. And at that time, we expect to be sort of in our next phase of sort of cost updates after all of the engineering and plumbing work or assessments, not assessments, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, MEP assessments are completed, and Ekman will get those updates. Ben will have submitted their updated designs. What was exciting last night, and I meant to bring the drawings, but I left them at the elementary school earlier today when I was there, but we're beginning to look at some more updated renderings. We're getting to look at, last night we looked at potential acoustic tile for the cafeteria at the junior senior high school, for example. So we're beginning to get to a place where we're talking about what it's really going to look like instead of just the dimensions and what the wiring needs to be. So it will be fun to move into that next phase, and we look forward to sharing that information as we move along.
Are those new plans up on the website, Meredith?
They were sent to us today. I don't know that they have yet been uploaded.
But they will be.
It was rather a busy day today, but yes, they will get uploaded to the website.
Meredith, if you could help me with some dates.
Sure.
At our meeting last night, just those of you that are following it, every, every meeting, every day, we get closer to final numbers. The original list was based on a bunch of well-thought-out assumptions. As we make changes and find situations, soils or sewer pipes that need to be moved or cafeterias that we'd like to extend or what have you, the numbers are going to get closer and closer. And I think right in the next meeting, we'll be about halfway there. Is that?
November first, we'll be doing another set of sort of cost updates. But yes, we'll be closer to halfway.
We'll be about halfway there. So it'll account for fifty percent of the known items. The final items will be done at the end of March. Is that correct?
That's right.
So that's when the suppliers will have put in their bids. We'll have refined our ins and our outs on the design. So obviously, it won't be any more than what we budgeted for. It could be less, but we'll be, we'll have a really refined number, so that's.
Yeah, that's a good macro summary. I got a little bit micro in mine, but yes, that's absolutely right. That's sort of the projected timeline. And again, we're expecting to break ground next April and begin the site work at both of our schools. And so we haven't had a ton of nitty-gritty, exciting new information to share, that work that happens behind the scenes and sort of mapping out, you know, what do we need for electrical systems? Where does the transformer go? How do you make the connections to the existing power supply? Where do you move your, you know, your cabling for these pieces? Do you need to add to the water? Those pieces aren't quite as glamorous for most of the public to watch. But, but all of it ties in, as Al said, to sort of putting together those final pieces so that we can really have a good sense of where we stand with respect to numbers. And the civil engineering, mechanical, electrical, plumbing that we'll talk about at the next meeting, do bring us to that next piece of then we'll come back with numbers on November first. That puts us pretty close. And then we'll be doing, going out to bid, we anticipate, in early January for the project.
And a couple of, just a couple of the unknowns that you might find interesting. For example, the sewer pipe that goes under the school, we have yet to scope it. So it could be intact. It could not be intact. We've done the geotechnical digs and soil tests, and they are not back yet to go to the individual that's going to define the, design the foundation. So it's those kinds of issues that are just going to take time. Unfortunately, it was not taped the other night. I think most of our meetings are.
Correct. They are.
But that's just kind of a broad picture of where we are.
Related note, the McGrath property that is where the access road to the elementary school is intended to go, the bus loop entrance. We received news just the end of last week from the Division of Historical Resources that it does not qualify as a historic register property. So we have been in the process of doing a little bit of abatement on the old dump site that was attached to that farm way back in the day. And so that process is complete, and we expect to be removing those buildings later this fall. We worked with an architectural salvage company. And thank you to Mr. Merle's, again, our facilities director, for his work on that. But essentially, they'll pay to reclaim what they can from those buildings. And we've also worked with the town to then take care of the demolition of those buildings and the hallway of whatever is left over. So again, just a lot of, a lot of things that are happening that you don't necessarily see the end results of. But all of the, all of that coordination takes a lot of time and effort and is, again, we hope to, will bear fruits for the community in the long run.
And to put it in perspective, to find that dump site, what we're talking about is a family that used to throw tin cans out the back door. This is not a.
Correct. No.
This is a household.
That's right.
This is.
No, oh, no, I'm.
It's all.
Thank you for that clarification. No, these were, yeah.
Tin cans that used to be soldered with lead.
That's right.
So, you know, so it's, and it's gone.
It is gone.
Any other committee reports? I know some of the other committees are going to be starting up in the next week or so. Ingrid?
The tech school board meeting for, the first one for the year is next Monday night.
Okay.
The one in June, we discussed attendance policy because they were revising their attendance policy, trying to make sure that it's most effective and how to get it to work. So, because they have to coordinate with so many different schools.
Right.
When students are not present and what happens if you have somebody who's long-term not there and somebody else missed a chance because they have limited number of spaces.
That's right.
So it was a concern.
In CIP, we have our first meeting Tuesday, this coming Tuesday at five o'clock.
Excellent. We'll hear about those afterwards.
The budget committee meets next Monday as well?
Yes.
What meets on Monday?
Budget.
Budget committee? Town budget committee?
We'll move on to the discussion items of our evening. We have several policies to go through, and I wanted to take a moment before we do to recognize Meredith for the hard work she's done on these policies. You know, one of the things that we are very fortunate in our district is that we have an educational leader who's directing us. And she does it in a myriad of ways, but these policies and the amount of time that she's taken to go through them is another example of that. So Meredith, thank you for helping us be up to date and appropriate so we can have policies that reflect the current trends and the safety and security of our students. So thank you. So we can go through them.
Okay. So all of the policies in your packet today are policies that are required by law in the state of New Hampshire. All of the policies that you have are modeled after the New Hampshire School Board Association model policies. So they, part of the dues that we pay to them supports their work, where an attorney helps draft the language, makes it compliant with the legal, with the law. A lawyer makes it compliant with the law. Imagine that. But it saves us a lot of legwork on the other end because they embed the statutory references, and then there are pieces that we then need to customize for our community. So the very first policy, and I won't belabor all of these. All of the changes are redlined in your, in the packet and online for folks who are reading along with us. But the very first one is our nondiscrimination policy. And just as an example, the law changed a couple of years back to add, for example, economic status as a category of folks against whom you cannot discriminate. So we had not yet updated our policy to reflect those legal changes that had occurred. In practice, we were still obligated to abide by the law, but our policy doesn't make that known to the public necessarily, so. The other piece that changed there, which was added statutorily, was the district is not, is prohibited from discriminating against any employee who's a victim of domestic violence, harassment, sexual assault, or stalking. And that was a legislative priority, again, a couple of years back.
I have one question about this. I know it says gender, but does that include gender identity?
It does.
Okay.
In the state of New Hampshire, that is included. The attachment to that spells out, again, updated to be compliant with the law, the grievance procedure for Title IX grievances, ACR. Again, those usually start at the building level with the principal, move to the superintendent of schools, and can move to the school board. So that is spelled out for you.
The questions that I noted on here, and I took them in order, so it may be that the form is later.
Sure.
Because I did, as I was going through the packet, realize there were, seemed to me some redundancies, and I thought, hmm, what's going back and forth? Is the form later, farther back in the packet? Is that what it is?
The grievance procedure for ACE. That is a good question. There are, sexual harassment forms are in here, but I don't know that there's a specific form in here for this one. You don't have to use a specific form.
Okay.
You just need to submit a written complaint.
And my other question was, it says, if the grievance is not remedied to satisfaction of the grievance issue, may then submit the complaint with all previous communications attached to the following parties in order, given responsible building principal, superintendent, and school board.
Yep.
If the complaint is against one of those parties.
So if the complaint is against the principal, it automatically moves up to the superintendent or to the central office level, and I might assign it to another central office administrator. If the complaint is against me, it goes directly to the board.
Board, okay.
Yep. And is usually investigated by an outside legal party.
And for all, I mean, many of these.
And you are right, there is a form missing for that one, so I will find that for you.
Many of these obviously have a confidentiality situation with them, but I don't see it noted. Does the overall policy of confidentiality just cover all the different areas? Or should?
So this specifically relates to the district in terms of these discriminatory practices.
Right.
You're.
Just, I was, I kept looking for something that said there would be, and this is in several of them, and it might, it might be our.
So that isn't spelled out in terms of retaliation, essentially, and confidentiality of the report?
Right, just that the items in the report remain confidential for whatever period of time.
So you're right. That isn't explicitly stated, but that is the obligation, and it's part of, is governed under the law.
Okay.
Procedural safeguards, policy ACE, again, in this spring, April or May, the state of New Hampshire updated its procedural safeguards for the disability access process, essentially. Procedural safeguards are required by law. So this one paragraph refers you to those updated New Hampshire procedural safeguards instead of trying to spell out the seventy-two thousand.
And that was my note. I liked that I'm doing that reference and not being redundant.
Again, policy ADB and cross-references in all of these are updated as well, so note that. So here, the change, you see it in the red line, workplace requirements for federal contractors and federal grant recipients. So those pieces were spelled out previously, but the legal citation had changed, so we needed to make those updates. Previously, we had to, we've always had to comply with drug-free workplace requirements for federal contractors. But now it's under forty-one U.S.C. section eighty-one to subsection eighty-one oh-two instead of section seven oh-one.
My assumption is that these writings and these changes are mandated.
They are.
And worded by mandate.
They are.
Right.
There are occasional places where we can insert our own, and I'm going to get to one of those. So you're right. I don't want to spend a ton of time on all of these.
Because whether we agree or disagree is moot.
Yeah, I mean, if there are specific questions, I mean, Ingrid captured, you're right. We are missing the form for ACE or for policy ACE. The form is missing. And so I need to make sure that that gets included in your packet for the next time. The tobacco product ban, no major changes, joint loss management, no major changes except it specifically now refers to off-school grounds during school sanctioned activities. Those are things that we have to monitor as well from a safety standpoint. Emergency care and first aid, I do want to bring your attention to. So added in red at the bottom there is an optional piece. And I think that, like all communities around New Hampshire and certainly around the country right now, are talking about naloxone or Narcan. Under state law, school nurses can have Narcan or naloxone on-site, which is a medication used to treat an opioid overdose. So we don't currently have that housed in our schools. The question before the board and before the community will be whether or not that's something we want to consider. Our nurses have just come back to school today, so we haven't had lengthy conversations with them about that. My recommendation to you at the next meeting, and we're not voting on any of these tonight, would probably be that you leave it out. But perhaps you recommend to me that a follow-up action would be to call a meeting of our school nurses, our police department, our emergency responders to consider whether or not it might be warranted to have that available to us in our schools.
The police do.
Exactly. Currently, the police do, and the fire department, emergency responders in town do have access to naloxone. But the question before us would be, have we seen any increase in our student population? Is that something we should be concerned about? Are the police and law enforcement folks in town seeing an increase in overdoses? I know that, you know, like every community, those numbers have gone up, and we want to be, make sure that we're doing what meets the needs of the community. Indoor air quality, only a statutory reference change. Data records retention, again, these changes date back a couple of years, but there are holds essentially placed on records. So if you get a right-to-no request, you can't suddenly run and throw all your records out the window. That makes a lot of sense, and that's been the law. But again, now we're specifically spelling that out in policy.
On that indoor air quality, it seemed very brief, and I did go on trying to find the New Hampshire codes on it. I'm assuming that a lot of that must be in those, the specifics of it, to get at ventilation. I mean, I thought it was kind of vague when it was, when I looked at their, their checklist was checking for ventilation, condensation, temperature, and cleanliness, I thought.
So we have specific checklists. They're about four or five pages in duration that we submit to the Department of Education on an annual basis. We just did, typically, those are submitted at the end of each school year. We just did updated sort of baseline indoor air quality assessments at the beginning of this school year because we know that at the end of this coming school year, we'll be very quickly stepping into construction, and we want to make sure we have all of that data, you know, as a baseline beforehand.
Right.
But the details of that are spelled out. And so it looks at a number of things, including your ventilation systems. How frequently are your filters changed? You know, how do your air handlers operate? Who's responsible for that maintenance? Do you have any mold issues? Do you have any mold issues as a result, or have you had any water seepage? It's, it's all of those kinds of things.
Okay. I just couldn't find that, that checklist to know what, what they were checking.
Yeah. Would you like to see it?
Just out of curiosity, I would.
Okay.
Because I do know that those things rain on and asbestos. I mean, I was just talking with somebody who, whose mother had one of the asbestos-related diseases, because her husband worked with all the asbestos stuff, and she did the laundry.
Wow. There you go. Up to policy EFA, again, only changes to the legal references. Sexual harassment for employees and staff, and there are identical policies essentially with just a different label. There's a sexual harassment policy for students as well, that, that appears later in your packet under the JBAA. This policy, I think, had last been updated in two thousand and eight, and so the changes that are here reflect current law and requirements for investigation, notifications, timelines, action by the district, appeals, all of those pieces. And we actually at our back-to-school for staff today, did an updated training on sexual harassment, again, for both employees and students, but school districts' responsibilities, employers' responsibility.
Is it an annual requirement then?
It is an annual requirement, yeah. The form is attached to that one. Background investigation and criminal records check. So, the law did change on this recently, and one of the pieces that will fall to me once this updated policy is adopted, is that the superintendent has to develop what they call a background investigation protocol, and we have to keep a written record of all background investigations which have been done. So, we already complete background checks on all of our prospective employees, they all go through a fingerprinting process. The, the piece that has changed here is that we, in the past, were only made aware of felony convictions for employees. Now, we are also made aware, or potential prospective employees, now we're also made aware of whether or not there have been misdemeanor convictions. We don't necessarily know the nature of those, but, but they may be brought to our attention. And so, in terms of developing a protocol, part of what we have to figure out is what's our consistent practice going to be as we receive that information. So, that is, that is a change in the state of New Hampshire, but the Department of Ed's attorney has been working with the School Administrators Association and the School Boards Association to develop some guidelines for schools to follow in, in dealing with those considerations. Also, updated there are requirements for volunteers. Again, we have been completing background checks on all of our volunteers, but now it specifically has to be included in our policy.
Does our police department do those?
Our police department can do what they call sort of a local criminal check, but we submit fingerprints for more complete response. The state police run those through their system.
Gotcha.
Does every volunteer have to be fingerprinted?
Every volunteer is intended to be fingerprinted.
Does that mean?
I, I don't know how many years it's been here. I know, five, six?
Yeah, I was going to say between five and ten is probably, yeah.
So, every coach?
Oh, every coach, every assistant coach.
Moms that come in to help?
Moms who come in to volunteer have to go through this process.
Field trip.
Really?
So, wow. And, so if somebody had been fingerprinted for some previous job, do they have to be re-fingerprinted?
They do.
So, a chaperone on a bus?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, our school system did everything except the fingerprinting, but of course, we had a-
So, I volunteered to go on a bus to Boston to the Museum of Science, you're going to fingerprint me, you're going to do a background check on me?
If you would like to be approved as a volunteer, under the law, we need to do those things.
We, we did everything except the fingerprinting with the military.
I, I think that those legislative changes stem, stem from situations that have occurred where, where folks who maybe had histories of violations involving minors had, that knowledge was not made available to the school, and things happened, and so legislatures took action to change laws, to do their best to protect students.
And I get, but I mean, a chaperone, intended chaperone can't do it, so another one is going to jump in in their place tomorrow night to chaperone, and we're going to have them fingerprinted and do a background check?
Well, we told our parents, we told our parents in our schools, first day, and went out in the handbook, that, that if you're going to volunteer, if you're going to chaperone, get yourself ready now. And our forms went out to parents immediately. I mean, I handed them out to my parents when I had my, my parent orientation before my students arrived.
And it is covered in our handbook and on our website, and I, I don't think it's, I think most of the time, it's been made very clear to folks that that information has to have been done ahead of time. A lot of folks take care of it sort of early on in their child's academic career, and-
Okay, I don't want to make big, just-
And it goes on, it continues once you've done it. So, if you do it for your child as a kindergartner?
Yeah, so there, there's some discussion, I would say, occurring about what intervals those should be rechecked, at what interval should we recheck the formal fingerprints, or at what intervals do we just recheck the local background? But yes.
At the elementary level, their forms fill out every year.
Yep.
That will have that.
But the fingerprinting doesn't occur annually, but the background check occurs annually.
Yeah.
But the back, the fingerprinting has to occur before sort of the first volunteer experience.
And at one point, it was only done on an annual basis.
Yep. Again, drug-free workplace, same copy of the policy that you saw back in the As. We have that in the overall district, sort of overarching policies, in the employee policies, and in the student section. So, some policies are required to be noted for each group that they apply to.
That was my question, why the double coverage?
Yes. And the same with policy GBED, the tobacco product ban, which is not, again, not just about cigarettes in two thousand and seventeen, but it extends to all related items, vape pens, e-cigarettes, all of the above. Responsible use of technology for employees.
They look very similar.
I think they are quite similar. In fact, I think they are identical.
I mean, that's what I thought.
So, I'm not sure why that one was retyped.
What's new and the different one other than the one?
Oh, the title.
Oh, the title. Oh, okay.
So, it's a title change. It used to say, school district internet access for staff, now it says responsible use of technology for employees.
And then it looks like some legal reference changes too.
Yes. And then procedures that accompany that are unchanged, those had last been updated in two thousand and thirteen.
Should we change it to employees on the procedures? Since it says, since it went from staff to employees on the policy, should we change it from staff to employees on the procedure?
That is a friendly amendment to me. I will make that note.
Good.
Teacher performance and evaluation, law on teacher evaluation changed, I think, three, four years ago maybe in New Hampshire. Our policy had last been updated in two thousand and eleven, so this change reflects current statutory language around what districts are obligated to do with respect to teacher evaluation, and, and notes that the development of a teacher evaluation system has to include all the parties that you would expect it to include, teachers, principals, and giving opportunity for comment. The next two policies, instructional needs of students with different talents, again, only changes to the legal references on that policy. Policy IG E has actually no changes, except that in our policy manual, it didn't reference what district this policy applied to, so we thought it might be important to note that. Policy IHAK, character and citizenship education. Again, you see in number four, consistent with some of those changes that we saw in our discrimination policy, that list was expanded a number of years ago, and these are, this is required instruction.
I was wondering why eight and nine were removed.
There's a list in the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules that says what should be covered. So, you're right, the wording in some of those maybe was the-
Yeah, okay.
Red a little bit nicer, I think, than the changes that they made, but it was absorbed with the changes that were made.
All right.
I'm surprised they didn't add economic status again, since they have the discrimination policy, but it didn't.
It is in four.
It is at the bottom, under disability, it's just not in red. We had that in here at the time, but we didn't have all the other items on the list. We did have economic status already, but for some reason, not some of the others. Health education and exemption from instruction, minor typographical errors in this one, and there's a related form that accompanies that.
I wondered, do the teachers have to give a specific advance notice on a specific timeline? Like two weeks before it starts, or a month before it starts, or anything like that?
So, the legislation has changed on that.
So, okay.
So, so it is now, there is a note, a two-week minimum notice requirement, and so that is not yet embedded in here, but that is what the law requires. With respect to the health education curriculum, because we offer a specific course in health education, typically, the syllabus for that course is available at the start of the school year, and typically, those requests are made by parents at, at the start of the year.
Okay.
Teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, again, this came from health education program requirements from the state. Used to be very narrowly constructed, and the breadth of that was expanded. An evidence-based prevention program may be used, but the, the crux of it is that we're responsible to establish and periodically review the district's guidelines for staff members providing education on the effects of alcohol, other drugs, tobacco, and dealing with abuse. And, and that happened through the meetings of our health department, our curriculum team, and the health department, and work with our assistant superintendent. Extended learning opportunities, only cross-references were changed. Programs for pupils with disabilities, you see the strikeout of the reference to the procedural safeguards, we covered those earlier in another policy. Referral procedure for special education. You see the recommended language.
I was intrigued that they were changing it from fifteen calendar days to fifteen business days, that extends the-
It does, and the state made those changes in their rules, again, in, in May, with the rewrite of the special education statutes. Which are available electronically from the state. Similar to the procedural safeguards policy, the evaluation requirements for children with specific learning disabilities, your next policy has been condensed to a paragraph, so that information is now laid out in the New Hampshire Special Education Policies and Procedures Manual, so we don't have to provide all of those details in our policy. Special education evaluations, change to a couple of typos and a leap, a couple of typos, excuse me, alternative learning plans, statutory references, summer activities, only the statutory references.
Couple notes, and this is probably just to inform me, how often are these used? And my other question was, what, what age groups, or what ages of students used?
Which policy specifically are you asking about?
Um, I think the alternative learning plans.
Uh-huh. It, it is typically secondary level. We have a number of students every year who participate, and Catherine, you might be able to speak to this as, as well as I can, but who participate in independent study or internships.
Oh, probably.
Community service, apprenticeships, online courses, so those are pretty frequently used in the high school? I don't know what you might want to add to that.
I'd say a good third of students take some type of online classwork, at least as juniors and seniors, because there's so many more classes available online nowadays.
That's really beneficial, yeah.
I know of at least four seniors who were doing internships during the school year last year, and really benefited from them, so it's definitely implemented in the school, and it's really great.
Nice to know. Thank you.
Back to these, advanced college placement. So, those, or that language was updated also based on changes to the New Hampshire Code of Admini, Code of Administrative Rules. The, the correct statutory reference is the second one, so it would strike out the first one on the top, Ed. 306-141-A6, advanced coursework. We're getting there, we're so close. You can tell, how fun this work is.
Necessary.
Eye crossing.
It is important. School community and home relations, so this policy, which used to just be a very simple paragraph that says, we encourage the use of community resources and citizens to help out the school, was heavily expanded by the legislature in two thousand and fourteen. And then, but the, two thousand and fourteen legislative updates happened after the school board had reviewed the policy, so these changes reflect what actually occurred legislatively in two thousand and fourteen. Emphasis on encouraging student participation in community service, some of those things we very much just talked about, partnerships with local organizations, businesses, et cetera. Policy IK, earning of credit. This speaks simply to the changes to competency-based education in New Hampshire. Again, those legislative changes occurred several years ago, and we had not yet, but no definition had been provided when the concept of proficiency first came about, or of competency first came about, so now it's been defined as a high level of demonstrated proficiency is, is now the definition of mastery. Policy IKB, homework has, has been updated, again, New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules changes. Essentially, it says teachers may assign homework, if they assign it, they have to help students understand how it will be evaluated and how it might impact their grade.
Sorry, Meredith.
No, that's okay.
Can you go down and make sure, I think we've gone off air for some reason, will you go, can you go check with the guy downstairs? I-
Al's going to call now.
Al's going to call. I'm, I'm looking, I'm like, that's not us.
So, so homework is a, a topic that I know has come up for discussion, it's a, it's a hot topic with faculty in our schools, and so our policy allows a lot of flexibility there. There are more detailed references in our handbooks, but, but essentially, through policy, it's at the discretion of the teacher, but encourages that if you do assign homework, that it's meaningful, and you help students understand how, how you intend to use and evaluate that homework, and how it might impact their grade.
Am I missing something? On the second paragraph, it says, the first two sentences, I thought, hmm, seems a little redundant to me, I may be missing something in that.
Sorry, first two sentences in the first paragraph?
Second paragraph.
In the second paragraph. Teachers may give homework to students. Teachers may give homework to students to aid in their educational development, and they may assign it as part of their curriculum, so it might be helpful to you, but it might not be part of my curriculum, so you could do it for other purpose.
Okay.
I agree with you, sometimes, um, policies can be developed-
Nuanced.
-over all the bases, and the nuances are interesting.
Yes.
You're right, it probably would not, it would not make a material difference to the policy, so if you would, before that we change that language, we certainly can. Promotion and retention of students, um, New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules change again, specifically calls out criteria that should be considered regarding the promotion of students. Doesn't limit that list, but it identifies it. Policy IKFA, again, a legal reference to instruction that's required.
Just for my edification, I think, when is this used?
Early graduation, a student who meets the, um, credit requirement prior to their senior year, or, or partway through their senior year. So once you've met the credit requirements, um, they can be waived.
So if they did summer school, or some extra college credits, and things like that?
Correct, yeah, I mean, many students have, um, you know, if they take full advantage of their blocks and don't take study halls, they can meet those credit requirements on an accelerated basis. Some students might enter high school, we'll get to that policy, I think, in a little bit, with-
Okay.
-advanced standing, because they've, um, taken some courses coming in, or received high school credit for algebra, for example.
Right, right, and that was gonna be one of my questions, too, was, uh, the-
Yep. Uh, distance education, again, reflects New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules changes, alternative credit options, the same, changes to the legal references, which brings us to high school credit for seventh and eighth grade coursework. Essentially, we allow students in seventh and eighth grade to take advanced courses like algebra or geometry, if they're prepared for those, um, and they can earn credit towards graduation for those.
Mm-hmm.
What, the addition here, and that hasn't been a change, but the addition here, um, says the, you need to get the principal's approval ahead of time, if you want to be able to apply those towards-
That, that was gonna be my question, I know our school system did that, but on top of that, they also require that you take three math classes in high school.
That's still a requirement here as well, um, and sometimes students who are moving through curriculum at an accelerated pace, they might take online courses, they might take a course at a community college, or at the University of New Hampshire, um, or an online college course, in order to meet the three math requirements, because they've exhausted, they've already passed calculus, um-
Yeah.
And so, it's another option.
Our school does a dual enrollment with-
Mm-hmm.
-Great Bay Community College, and I know some people who take math courses with Great Bay to get college credits, because they've done A calculations.
Helps them get into anything that requires those advanced math programs at college.
Really great.
Great.
Service animals did not appear to have any changes, so I need to check that for you.
Meredith, one thing I noticed, unlike, this one made me think of it, is that why it doesn't have first reading and a date, because of no change?
Correct.
Okay.
It is a required policy, but has no recommended changes. But, so, we're reviewing all of our required policies, there are a couple of them to which we recommended no changes, most of them had at least some statutory changes, but even the ones with no recommended changes, what will be noted is that we at least have reviewed those policies-
Okay.
-because you want to be in the habit of reviewing policies on regular intervals as a board.
That was a part of the question that I didn't want you-
Yep.
Okay.
Um, the sexual harassment students policy, it's identical to the policy you looked at under the staff section. Um, change of school or assignment, um, has an addition that specifically identifies special education placement. Manifest educational hardship spells out, again, the specifics, simplified, the language is just slightly simplified there. Again, requirement, these are all required, the law gives us lots of guidance about what these should look like. Admission of homeless students, in keeping with McKinney-Vento law, New Hampshire rules. Attendance absenteeism and truancy. So there is, um, there are only a couple of changes to that. One, it used to be required that it be mailed to students, well now it is shared digitally with students, we no longer mail those home, copies are available to any family who doesn't have access to them digitally, and we do monitor that. Student rights and responsibilities, minor change, student discipline and due process, review, no recommended changes. Hazing, minor change, tobacco product ban, again, identical to what you viewed before. Weapons on school property, typos, cease of restraint and seclusion, statutory references, legal references. Student health services, calls out, changes called for under the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules. Similarly, administrative medication to students, addresses that, and specifically references, um, frocodilators, nebulizers, things that were not previously covered under policy. Special physical health needs, statutory, emergency care and first aid. So again, this, this calls out, this is a duplicate of the policy we talked about earlier, we'll want to discuss how you want to approach the Narcan option. Behavior management and intervention, no change, uh, sorry, minor legal reference change, child abuse and neglect, legal reference change, joint loss management is a duplicate, covered in an earlier section. Student records access and FERPA. There's one, uh, change recommended in the timeline. School community and home relations is a duplicate, we already looked at that, and Title I, family and community engagement, is the required for any district receiving Title I funds. Facilities grievance procedure, reviewed, no recommended changes, relations with police- It's getting late. Relations with police authorities. We just struck out, um, the appendix for the memorandum of understanding, the memorandum of understan- there's not an appendix in which that's included, but it is available, it's in, um, board minutes, it was, uh, last updated this spring. And advanced college placement is the required language, it's a duplicate as well.
If I were to get the, uh, policies and procedures from Ways to Ripon, would they be the same as this?
These required policies would be almost identical.
So, do they just, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of efficiency and so forth, do, do they, does the state just publish the new ones for you?
The New Hampshire School Boards Association publishes the new ones for us, the state publishes the new Code of Administrative Rules. The legislature passes-
Right.
-the new regulations, so we get an updated legis- copy of the laws, then we get an updated copy of the ed administrative rules that are attached to the laws. Sometimes there's a lag period between those two.
Right, right.
And then, the School Boards Association attorneys, sometimes working with the Department of Ed Attorney, or school administrators' attorneys, work together to develop model policies that are then distributed to dues-paying members of their association. So we, as a district, subscribe to the School Board Association Policy Services through your membership, they give us the model policies, we update our policies based on those. We have so many, because there's been a little bit of lag in updating some of these required policies within the district, so typically, in a given year, you might have eight, ten, twelve, um, required policies where there have been changes, not this many.
So, if, if they issue six or eight new policies during the year, and it's in this form, it's simply a man we're bringing it, we don't have any decision over whether we accept this or not?
You do, I mean, you, you can choose to ignore the law, right, or choose-
No, 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 but you, I mean, it's-
There aren't major decisions to be made with respect to most of these policies. Again, sometimes they have optional clauses, like the, the administration of Narcan, right? That's an optional section.
Right, 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 right.
And so, the board does sometimes have discretion around these, most of these are longstanding, um, policies related to established law, that there's little discretionary room in.
So can I go to someplace and get all of the current policies for, um, a district like Newmarket?
Yes.
And put Newmarket in the title, and I'm done?
Um, well, the challenge is you already have a lot of existing policies, and so you have to update or replace your existing policies.
You can't just bring the new book in.
You can't just bring the new book in. And you have policy that actually dictates how you adopt policy.
Sounds like much garbage.
So, so, so I'm hopeful that over the course of this year, we will be able to, to make a really good dent, so this, this, when we come back to it, and I'm not recommending it at the next meeting, but at the subsequent meeting, so there's some time for it to sit and people to be aware of it, um, but on the 22nd of September, we'll ask you, I'll ask you to adopt these policies with whatever changes have been recommended at that time. Um, and then, hopefully, unless, unless the law changes, these will be sort of put to bed, and you might not need to look at most of them again for another five years.
Are there, is there another pact like this?
Not a required, but there are stacks of recommended policies in each section of our manual, and so we need to work through-
Gotcha.
-each section of our manual.
So if I look at the student handbook, obviously, that's us.
That is, yep.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
And, yes, but, there's much more work to do on the policy front.
Wow.
Um, but, but we really, so, part of it is really doing a close reading of your own policies, and saying, oh, what do we already have, what's missing, what do we need to add? Um, yeah, I wish it were simpler.
Wow.
Thank you, Meredith.
That was dry, I'm sure it made for exciting viewing at home.
That's why we went off screen.
We put the people downstairs.
Somebody went.
Oh dear.
All that fun.
Moving along a bit, we've already done the facility request waiver, so that's been addressed, so we're gonna move to the, um, junior, senior high art building report that, um, Greg submitted about the Perkins Building.
Yes, so, one of the questions that was raised through the building committee process was, uh, actually the facilities committee at the time, um, but was, is this a property that we should be hanging on to, or should we demolish it when we're doing the addition renovation work? So Mr. Miles, um, July, um, did a very thorough review of that building, its facilities and systems, and the conclusion is that it's in pretty darn good shape. Um, there were some monies put into it a few years ago, you can see on page six that he's outlined, um, some repairs, um, pieces that would need to be made over the coming years.
That's not totaled, is it?
It is not totaled, I did total it, it's somewhere around twelve or thirteen thousand dollars, I believe, but not all of that would necessarily be required. For example, one of the things that's on there is the Kilm Interlock.
Yeah.
Well, that Kilm will move into the renovated junior, senior high when the time comes, so that would come off the list. Electrical service upgrade may happen as a part of the, um, addition renovation project, because we'll be putting a garage and running electrical connection to the garage from the Perkins power supply, so that may happen as a part of that. So, we probably won't hit all of these, but these are things that we'll be looking to build into a repair and maintenance budget over the coming years. They're not all in immediate need, um, for example, we've already addressed the exterior painting, that just gives you a, an idea, but it's good news, it's a, it's a good asset for us, and one we want to hold on to, and I think it has a lot of, certainly it's gonna be heavily utilized until we get through the construction period, but I think it has a lot of potential for us, um, beyond that.
Is there, I mean, this is a huge issue, it isn't, is there any way we can get that trailer that's sticking out behind it moved? It looks like, it looks like Sanford and Son up there. And I asked, I asked what's in it, and the answer I got was junk. And I, that was a, that was a flip answer, but anyway, it, it looks so nice over there, now that we've got it all landscaped, and yet we-
Wait till the construction starts.
So, I actually don't really know myself what's in that trailer, predates me, but we will, we will assess that and provide an update.
I hear it has not been opened in years.
And I know there were one or two issues of people hanging out around the trailer as well, that were not supposed to be there, that we had a few issues. All more reason. So thank you for bringing that to my attention, and I will-
It's a huge issue, I know it's a-
See what I can figure out. The good news is, it should be an easy one to fix.
Right. Um, now we'll move on to the action items, the first thing in the action items, the approval of admittance, but as I was absent from that meeting and cannot vote, we would not have a form two vote, so if, if it's acceptable to the board, I would like to delay it for the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, Al, the next thing is the approval of the manifests.
We have a bunch of manifests to approve, so the numbers are gonna sound a little different this time, but I'd make a motion to approve the manifest from 623 to 825, uh, 2017, payroll manifest in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-two cents, accounts payable manifest in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-four cents, a bond in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-six cents, a total of manifests of two million, five hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
And I'll second that.
On a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Ms. Alberg, um, any discussion about the manifests, you know, if we move to vote, all those in favor of approving the manifest, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. Next thing on our list is an item that we discussed in non-public session about, um, approval of admission of non-resident students to the district, um, for the upcoming school year.
So, due to confidentiality reasons, we're not gonna address, um, folks involved with those, but we're seeking, um, a board vote on consideration of the waivers requested under policy JFAB.
I seek an motion to approve, uh, these students, uh, non-resident students-
So moved.
-in our district.
Second.
On a motion from Ms. Alberg, a second from Mr. Zink, we discussed this in non-public, is there any non-confidential discussion at this point? Hearing none, I'm going to vote, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, no, no opposition on those. Meredith, can you give us a brief update on the food service price increase before we move to vote on that?
So every year, our food service director fills out a, how many pages it is, eight? Something along those lines, um, page, school year paid lunch equity tool, um, for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, that helps arrive at a meal cost for students for the ensuing year, um, due to this very complicated calculator formula. Um, we are recommending a meal increase of ten cents at the elementary school to two dollars and sixty-five cents, and an increase of ten cents, um, at the junior, senior high school, um, up to two dollars and eighty-five cents. Those increases are for lunch only, and, and essentially, they're based on what does it cost to prepare those meals, what does it cost to procure, um, all of the ingredients for those meals, it, it factors in all of those pieces.
With a reduced meal plan, also.
No change to the reduced meal cost, um, and no change to the breakfast cost, so these changes are proposed for lunch meals only, so again, an increase of ten cents for both the elementary and junior, senior high.
I seek a motion to approve the increase of ten cents to the lunch menu pricing for the elementary school and the ju- the junior high.
So moved.
Second. On a motion from Ms. Alberg, and a second from Mr. Kinnis, uh, Mr. Kinnis and Ms. Zink- On a motion from Ms. Oliver and a second from Mr. Kinnison and Ms. Zink to approve the ten cent increase of the school lunch prices at both schools, is there any discussion? We'll move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition on that one. Our next issue is to address, for action, is the Newmarket Elementary School and Junior, Senior High handbooks.
Yeah.
Meredith, do you want to talk about sort of what's gone on with those over the summer at this point?
Sure. So last year, obviously, it was my first summer here. It was the first summer for our junior, senior high school principal. We took a cursory look, I would say, at these handbooks. They've been, handbooks that had been adopted by the board in prior years. We didn't make significant changes. This year, we took a very comprehensive look at these handbooks for both of our schools. Updating language, I think, to reflect current practice for some things that were a little bit outdated. At the junior, senior high school, a lot of work was done last year by student government around the dress code policy. So those changes have been recommended and placed in, in the handbook here. In general, we've tried to sort of update policy information. We've spelled out expectations around things like planned extended absences. We've taken out, for example, in the junior, senior high handbook, the entire athletic handbook was reprinted in the school handbook, but it already exists separately. We pulled out some things that already exist in the program of studies, which, you know, again, these are other documents that the board also approved. So trying to eliminate some redundancy, trying to make sure language was consistent across both handbooks where it should be, like, things like emergency plans and emergency dismissals, that, that information was accurate and up to date. So it was a lot of housekeeping and cleaning up of some things that, again, hadn't been updated in a few years, or significantly updated in a few years.
I had one question, Meredith.
You bet.
Basic one. On page nine, 10, the junior, senior high, page nine, I don't think the entire staff listing is there.
No. I think that was a Google Docs formatting error.
Okay.
So it reprinted one column three times rather than three columns. And I believe this version was printed from Google Docs. We have an existing Word version that has the accurate listing of the junior, senior high school faculty.
I thought I was seeing things a couple times when I was looking at the computer, so I, I wasn't going to bring it up until I checked with hard copy.
Good news, it's not you.
Good, for once, for once.
Not my glasses.
No. And that was the, the one thing I saw on that. I seek a motion to approve the Newmarket junior, senior high and elementary school student parent handbooks for the year 2017, 2018.
So there were three you're making a motion for?
Two.
There are two parent student handbooks and two teacher handbooks.
So you've got a two student parent
Yep, one for each building.
And one teacher.
There's an elementary school teacher handbook and then at the junior, senior high, it's referred to as the supplement.
We, that is not printed out here.
We don't have that.
Yes, here it is. Yes, we do. On the bottom of the stack, the, the
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yep, logistics is, uh
I guess we can approve them all.
Okay.
One thing that I wanted to say about the teacher books is, you know, obviously, it's two different schools, but it's within the same district.
Yes.
And if we could have sort of one handbook for the entire district moving forward, I think that would be something that we would want to change.
So it is true that, and I, I expect that we'll be bringing to you relatively soon just a general employee handbook. What, what the elementary school handbook and high school handbook specifically deal with things like duty schedules and coverages
Exactly.
in each building.
Oh, okay.
And so those are a little bit different.
Right.
Grading practices at the elementary school are a little bit different than grading practices at the junior high, junior, senior high. So the differences should be around those
Right, those kinds of things.
sort of local things.
The dates of the meetings, staff
Right, dates of faculty meetings.
Okay.
Other areas are consistent
Okay.
and, and will be reflected in a
Uniform book.
uniform in the handbook.
So I want to, I'm going to change what I said before. So I seek a motion to approve the two student handbooks, one for each school, and the two teacher handbooks, one referred to as a teacher supplement for, one for each school.
So moved. Second.
On a motion from Ms. Oliver and a second from Mr. Zink, is there any discussion?
Yeah, the Newmarket Elementary School teacher handbook.
Yes.
These are, are work rules and so forth outside the contract.
Yes.
So, so there's nothing within this that is negotiated?
Correct.
This is management rights language.
Correct, yeah.
Logistical things of if I'm going to be out for a day in Paddleway, who do I call? When do I call? That type of thing.
But it also says this is the way, this is how things will be done.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion on the handbooks? And we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving these four handbooks, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. And our final action item for the night is approving two donations. First is from the Newmarket Community Educational Partnership. It is the Nicholas Popov Award that was awarded to Ann Tufts in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars. And the second is a Lamprey Healthcare Incorporated for the, an award for the Granite Youth Alliance, which is a twelve hundred dollar award. Meredith, what is the Granite Youth Alliance?
So it's a student organization at the high school. There's a youth to youth chapter at the junior, senior high. And essentially, we have an agreement with Lamprey Health, subject to board approval, that they provide funding for advisors to serve that program. Those advisors have to meet certain training requirements, attendance requirements, and reporting requirements about the work of the organization in order to receive that funding. And again, we, we enter into an agreement with them. If the board approves the action, we enter in an agreement with them to receive those funds.
I seek a motion to accept the donations from the Newmarket, the NCEP, for four hundred and fifty dollars and Lamprey Healthcare Incorporated for twelve hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion from Mr. Zink, second from Ms. Oliver, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll move to the vote. All those in favor of accepting donations, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. And the last thing is a personnel matter
Yes.
for our future nomination. Meredith, if you'll explain that to us a bit.
Sure.
We'll take it from there.
I am nominating Donna Forsier for the position of reading, writing interventionist at the junior, senior high school. She comes to us with a master's degree in education as well as a bachelor's in elementary ed and several years of experience, including working locally with adult education here in the area. She is certified as a literacy specialist, and we think she will do a great job for our students.
Excellent. And we need to approve that nomination, correct?
Yes, please.
Yes. I seek a motion to approve the nomination that Meredith has just listed for the reading and writing specialist junior, senior high.
So moved.
Second. On a motion from Ms. Oliver and a second from Mr. Zink for the approval of the personnel nomination, is there any discussion? I appreciate having the background as, to know where people are coming from or what their experiences are and what they'll bring to the district, so thank you for sharing that. Any other discussion? We'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the nomination, please say aye.
Aye.
No Okay, you would think one word. No objection to that, okay. All right. Goodness gracious.
What happens? That's what policy can do.
All right, before
Wait until you get to be my age.
Wait until you see it then, Al, we're talking around. Where am I?
He didn't even capture a thought, never mind.
A couple of things before we adjourn the meeting for the evening, just to, so people can highlight the, the schedule coming up. Next, and a couple reminders about meetings. Next Wednesday at seven, on the 30th, we have the joint school board and town council meeting. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is on September 7th at 7:00 p.m. in the town council chamber. And the building committee will be meeting again on September 13th. Meredith said at 5:00 p.m. in the auditorium.
Yes. That changed last night.
And our next school board meeting will be the night, the following night on the 14th. No, it won't. It's the 21st. Let's track that. Okay. As everyone returns to school. Oh, no, I did not. And on September 5th, as I alluded to a little bit earlier, we will be meeting to go over, review Meredith's evaluation and performance this year and have a school board retreat on September 5th.
And the time is on that?
That is 6:30. So just to review my reviewing, next Wednesday, we have August 30th, the joint school board and town council meeting, 7:00 p.m. The next thing is September 5th, 6:30, Meredith's evaluation and our board retreat. September 7th at 7:00 is our next school board meeting. And then there's a building committee meeting on the 13th at 5:00. And then our next regularly scheduled school board meeting in the second month of September at 7:00 p.m. on the 21st.
And a school building committee meeting on the 27th.
There we go.
May I add one thing that I neglected to mention earlier?
Yes, you may.
So we report to the Department of Revenue Administration in the state every year on our end of year financials. That, that submission is what's called the DOE 25.
Okay.
Usually that's submitted before the audit is received, and that will be true this year as well. And then we update that after our financial statements are audited, if any updates are required. But the DOE 25 is due to the Department of Revenue Administration on September 1st. So we will be bringing that to you for signature at a future meeting, but we'll also be providing an updated report on our financials as reported in that statement to you at the next business meeting.
Excellent.
So, so, so it's going to be submitted prior to
We submit it anyway, yeah. You, you ultimately, there's a cover sheet that you have to sign, but it's essentially, we just work through the numbers and we report, here's what the totals are in each category, similar to the information that we provided to you at the end of the school year when Lisa came and talked about sort of where we were in each category. So we then, once we finish the fiscal year, summarize all of that, report it on the required forms to the Department of Revenue Administration and the Department of Education. That's due every year September 1st. And we'll be submitting it for September 1st and then giving the full update at the business meeting after that.
Meredith, the submission does not require our signature?
Submission does not require your signature. The form does have to be signed by you. You're meeting next week, so we may bring the form to you for signature at that time.
You know, we've gone through a ton of policy this evening, and it's, it's, it's difficult sometimes to remember why we're here. The reason why we're here is that school opens on Monday. And the heartbeat of the, the schools and the former students will return, and I just hope that everyone has a successful and safe 2017, 2018 school year and wish everyone the best.
Bus routes are posted on our website, and if you have questions about bus routes, you can place a call certainly to the school office or to our student offices as well.
And, and a good wishes to the heating system in the high school as well.
Oh, goodness. I hope we don't need it for a few weeks.
I seek a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Zink and a second from Ms. Oliver. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
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 Thank you all very much.
Thank you.